All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Today's April 22, 2024. Just a quick reminder to turn your cellphones off or on silent. Council members, ensure your council, are your microphone is turned on. It is 6:01 PM. It is committee of the whole meeting for Barberton City Council. Before we begin the committee of the whole meeting, we do have individual committee meetings this evening. And we're going to do something a little different. And given that some of the council members have a charity event this evening, we're going to change it up. So we're going to start with a special utilities committee meeting with Mr. Griffin.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. City Utilities, I would, excuse me, I'd like to call this meeting to order today. April 22, we are in council chambers. All members of my committee are present. Including myself as chair, Jennifer Hager, Emily Beck, and Justin Greer. All others noted. Tonight, we have a special meeting from utilities. Our first request for legislation. A letter from Dennis Weaver, Utilities Director, requesting authorization for the mayor to enter into a contract with Norman Eckinger Incorporated for WWTP sludge de-watering building rehab project in amount of $2,782,654. This will be reimbursed through the Ohio Building Program. Emergency wording is requested. And I do have Mr. Dennis Weaver here in the audience, and he's going to update us on this.
We talked briefly about this building back when we did the budget hearings. And this building was constructed in the later 80s, started in 86 and ended up in 88 was complete. So over 7,000 square feet, 7,300 some odd feet. So it's a pretty large building, high building, bridge cranes inside. So there's quite a bit of infrastructure that it houses. And due to the type of environment that it is in, it sees a lot of deterioration. So being metal building, we've, once we got into that, took the inner skins off. We found that the beams and things were rotten pretty badly. And the cost to replace the building versus just to do, you know, some interior rehab, it was pretty close. So this way, the building will be under warning when we're complete as well. And fortunately, we have the Ohio Build Grant to cover this. There'll be no local portion on this part of the project. The improvements that we just made at the wastewater treatment plant will count as our local portion for the grant. So this will be a 100% covered by the Ohio Build. We received, the bid came in a little bit under our engineering estimate. Norman Eckinger is the contractor. They're from Canton area, over 50 years of experience. And they are somebody who puts up a lot of these types of buildings. This is what's called Butler Building. That's the brand. That was the original. No one even competed against them. I think it was pretty well known. They would be, it would be hard to beat. You know, replacing a Butler Building with a Butler contractor. So, but I, you know, we're satisfied with it. They were evaluated. Our consultants says they're a quality builder and are very capable of handling this project. So we're kind of excited to get it back, you know, to get this building rehabbed. Any questions on it? Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you for the special meeting. I appreciate it.
I do have one question. How long would it, is it going to take for the grant reimbursement to come through? Like has?
The reimbursements come quickly. We, you know, when we get a pay estimate from the contractor, we submit those and we get a reimbursement within 30 days. So those will be submitted on a 30-day basis.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from Mr. Weaver in the gallery or council? Okay. Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Pass this legislation for itself. Thank you, Mrs. Hager.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion passes. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And there's also a second one.
Yes, I have it. This is going to be referred to finance. A letter from Dennis Weaver, Utilities Director, requesting authorization for the mayor to enter into a contract with Norma, Norman Eckinger Incorporated for the WWTP sludge de-watering building rehabilitation project in amount of $2,782,654. This will be reimbursed through the Ohio Buildings Program. This second request is for appropriation from the unappropriate item of the city grant fund to the capital budget to the city grant fund. Emergency wording is requested. Do we have anything from Mr. Weaver on this? Hearing none. Do I have a motion for this, this legislation?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Senator?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, then.
I'll second.
Adjourn at 6:07. It passed, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. All right. We're going to continue with a little out of order here since there is no other request for legislation referring to finance. We're going to go right into finance and personnel with Mrs. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Finance and Personnel Committee to order. It is Monday, April 22, 2024, 6:07 PM here in council chambers. All members of my committee are present, which includes myself as chair, Mr. Heidig, Mr. Griffin, and President Greer. All other council members are also present. Yeah, all other council members are also present with the exception of Mr. Cheatham. All other guests are noted on my agenda sheet. We have one request for legislation, which we just read in the Utilities Committee. Is there any further discussion regarding that? Can I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Moving on, we have a letter from Lisa O'Callaghan Miller requesting legislation to amend ordinance 27-2024 and enter contract with Open Gov to reflect an increase in the total contract amount for three years, $152,156. Emergency wording and one reading is requested. Are there any remarks regarding this request? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to call, please? Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have continued discussion called for. A letter from Mayor William Judge requesting a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Barberton, the Barberton Board of Education, and the Barberton Community Foundation. Mayor, if you want to go ahead and we'll open that up.
Yeah, so as we mentioned before, a few weeks ago, this is a memorandum of understanding between the foundation, the city, and the schools to swap some land. Swap is a legal term in the ORC, especially when it comes to the schools and getting rid of land. This all centers around the industrial park at Newell and Norton Avenue. So there were some questions. Since last time we were up discussing this, some questions that evening, we've responded to those. I have not received any new ones over the last few days. But we do have Mr. Tom Hard and Mr. Jason Dotson here if there's any additional questions.
This packet that Mr. Dotson sent me, sent us, and then I forwarded to the rest of councils about the Newell Street Industrial Park Improvement Project. And it talks a little bit about the project budget and schedule. And under, I guess, sources of funds, it says city ARPA funds, $100,000 in design costs, $947,072 in construction cost. Total cost is a little over $1 million, and it's secured. Where is that coming from?
Jason Dotson with Russell and Andrus. So that document that you have there is what we had utilized in order to apply for Transportation Improvement District funding for the Newell Street project. And you need to be able to document to the Ohio Department of Transportation that if you don't have the funding, that you still have the resources to be able to undertake the project. The current budget, if you will, in terms of what that would look like, is we were successful in getting that application through from the state of Ohio. So we were able to get $350,000 from the state. And then just a couple months ago, in addition to that, well, the state of Ohio did a second round of TID at the end of '23, beginning of '24. And we applied, even though we had already paid in full for the Worcester Road project, we had applied for another $500,000 for that project so that we would be able to use Transportation Improvement District money, put it into that project, pull $500,000 of ours back, and then be able to put it on this project as well. So you've got $850,000 of state grant money that we've obtained for that project. And then I think for Mr. Tiedeki, the balance of that hundred and some thousand would just come out of the regular city budget, I believe.
Correct.
But yeah, the, the, the plan is no longer because we were able to get those funds to use that ARPA money. But we did have to document the ability to, to do the project if need be.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Dotson or the mayor? We also have Mr. Harden in here as well from the school board.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I do know that there was some controversy or, or debate about who was paying for what. Have those been resolved? Are we just not talking about it? Yeah, I know Mr. Heidig had.
Mr. Heidig.
I wasn't going to say it, but I just wanted to see where that was at, at this moment.
Through email back and forth with Mr. Tiedeki, the mayor, Mr. Dotson, there was a miscommunication on my end with the copy of the map that I had. From what it looked on the black and white copy on a piece of paper, that the portion of Norton Avenue that's currently owned by the schools, it looked like parking. Like if we had that, it was going to be public parking. The whole basis of my uneasiness with, with it was that if that was going to remain parking, then why would we build another parking lot? After speaking with everybody and especially Mr. Tiedeki, I couldn't see very well on that black and white copy. That is not the case. Parking is going to be completely eliminated up and down Norton Avenue. The parcels would go to the street. A turn lane would be added. So in fairness, if we do take that entire strip of parking away from the schools, then I did agree that it would only be right that we do replace what we're taking. But from the map I had, the basis of my argument was that the schools were going to have a plethora of parking and part of it on our die.
I got you.
So yes, it has been resolved over the course of this week.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Mr. Heidig. That's all I had. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Ms. Gerhart, did you have something as well? Go ahead. I'll get it higher. So in the memo that you sent us, Jason, it talked about the city wasn't able to purchase it, but the foundation was. But the city has to be involved now because of what the foundation is?
No. So the, the issue actually comes down to the schools and the restrictions on every school in the state of Ohio, their ability to dispose of property. And when you look at the revised code, generally, the rule is they have to offer that property at auction, and they have to offer it to charter schools before they offer it up for auction. Now, no charter school is just going to want to strip a land along Norton Avenue. But the concern about putting it up for auction is that somebody who knows that the foundation is trying to put an industrial park there is going to potentially come in and try to outbid everyone for that land because then they're going to control access off of Norton Avenue into the park. So what we are taking advantage of is an exception under the revised code that allows a school district to exchange property or swap property with a, a, a city. I think only cities and villages have the ability to do that type of a swap. And then essentially, what would happen is the land along Norton Avenue that the school has would come to the city. The new parking lot along Newell Avenue would come to the city from the foundation. And then the city will then swap those back out, give the land, the land along Norton would then go back to the foundation. And the land along Newell Avenue will then go to the school. And in addition to that, then, because the city is putting in the paving of the parking lot along Newell Street, the school district is also putting in the two or three parcels over at Newton Park as well would transfer from the school over to the city.
And that financially seems pretty fair, given what that's worth.
Yeah. If you look at the acreage, the acreage between the, the property that is being transferred between the school and the foundation is like 2.11, 2.13 acres. It's all pretty much the same. And then if you look at the, I think the city's cost is estimated at $142,000 to repave the lot. And the value, and I only looked up two, I forgot there was a third parcel, but two of the three parcels for Newton Park were like 180 some thousand. And I think that third one probably drives it closer to 200. So it, you're, you're not required under the revised code to have an equal-for-equal swap. Both, both the school district and the city council have to determine that it's for the mutual benefit of the parties. But I think functionally here, we're probably about as close to equal as, and I do a number of these, we're probably as close to equal as I've seen on this.
Yeah. Your memo helped a lot. Thanks for sending that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
I do have, I think, I have a concern a little bit. And maybe I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself because we're talking about land swapping right now. But there's, you talked about the street. I think this looks like a traffic nightmare. You have kids trying to get to school, parents trying to get to work, now people trying to get to a couple different businesses. So tell me about how you're going to, to work this street situation. Are you just doing one turn light? Like, I know, I might be getting ahead of it, but?
No, you're good. You're good. And it might actually be helpful. I know Mr. Tiedeki emailed the clerk the drawing. It might actually be helpful to just have it up there for everybody to look at. One of the things that we were trying to avoid is not having all of the traffic into the property, kind of entering and exiting what would be the southwest corner of the property. They're off of Newell Street by the railroad tracks. And so there would still potentially be an ingress and egress there in terms of a, a business that might be located right along the railroad tracks, which is one of the benefits of the site. And so that's part of the reconstruction in Newell Street would allow that to occur.
Are you saying like a, a little road?
No. Like you'd have a driveway that would just come off of Newell Street into the site down there just.
Oh, I see this here. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And then everybody else in the site, the way this is designed, would come in and out off of Norton Avenue. Now, the, you would have, you'd have a new turn lane on Norton Avenue. And would you have a new turn lane on Newton or just on Norton Avenue? So you'd have new turn lanes on both. The, the ideal design, when we get to the point in time when we would actually determine who's in that site, that's going to dictate where those drives are going to come in off of Norton Avenue. Ideally, you'd probably align them with the intersections. You might need traffic control devices that would be there. But I think for the, right now, what we're trying to focus on is getting the hard road infrastructure changed so that we can support the site. It's, you know, I mean, the reality is it's not, ideally, we wouldn't have this 38 acres by the schools. But it's there. And so I think we're trying to mitigate against that as best as we can by trying to keep most of the traffic up on Norton and most of it off of Newell Street.
Got it. So that makes me ask, are you taking, so you're widening the street. Are you taking that piece of property from this industrial park side or?
Yeah. If you look, and I apologize, the color map depicts it a lot better. There are, there's a purple line that runs along Newell Street on what would be the east side of Newell Street. And there's a purple line that runs along the southern part of Norton. And what would happen is during that time when the city would own both pieces of property before it completes the swap, it'll dedicate that property that runs along the, I guess what I would say, the southeastern side of that intersection. I think Mr. Tiedeki's bringing up some color copies. And you don't actually need a lot of additional land to be able to do that.
So this right here is what they're talking about here? Right.
It's like a purple or a pink color.
Right. And one of the reasons why, another reason why I am concerned about this, not just people getting to school. Not just people getting to school to work, things like that. But if we want businesses to move in here, if they're looking at a traffic nightmare, location, location, location. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. And that's why we're making the improvements to the street.
Yeah.
Part of the problem is in terms of, you know, future signaling. If we end up with one large user that enters and exits off of the, call it the eastern side of Norton Avenue, your configurations may be different than if they're going to be coming in closer to the intersection. And I think, you know, we're able to do what we can do right now with what we know. But there may be additional improvements that would be necessary based on who comes in there.
That leads me to my next question. That kind of dawned on me a little bit later in the week last week. So we talked about Malco wanting to come in here, and then we don't know who's coming into the other parcels. But, you know, is that, is this, is Norton Avenue, Newell, are they able to handle like 80,000 pound trucks that are going to be coming in, in and out of here? You know, like where everyone's up in their arms about streets to begin with. This is a main thoroughway into our town. What, what's going on?
Right. And that's why we're improving Newell Street, to be able to accommodate if there is traffic that does come in in that southwestern corner of the site. One of the things we've been doing, you know, Norton Avenue, we don't have that same concern about having to rip it out and rebuild it to accommodate the truck traffic. And if you look at some of the other users along Norton Avenue, you see that already. It's why one of the things that, that the city has done in the last few years is Copark, for example, has to pay an annual fee to both the city of Barberton and the city of Norton for the truck traffic that they have going up and down the road. It's why with Barberton Tree, we did a TIF there, and the TIF doesn't go to Barberton Tree at all. It actually comes back to the city to help pay for the city costs that would be there. It's one of those things that when we have somebody else who comes into that site, it's going to be another consideration that we would look at, is if we did a TIF, for example, do we share a part of the TIF with the business and keep part of the TIF for the city? So that, you know, we, we essentially have roads in Norton Avenue that can accommodate the traffic. But how do we position ourselves best for ongoing maintenance that might come up there in the future? You know, the city's got something a lot of communities don't have in having that quarter percent. But it doesn't mean we can't be smart and trying to figure out other ways to put money into the pot in order to help with the maintenance. So it's going to be something that we'll all have to collectively deal with as that site develops.
And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of things that, in theory and practice, come up. But, I mean, this really was kind of concerning to me. This is my ward. So, you know, I'm going to get a lot of questions about this, and some are going to love it, some are going to hate it. But the one thing that I really kind of was concerned about was. about was all of this added traffic seems to be another not to work out.
Yeah. One of the things, we met with the foundation for probably about an hour and a half on Thursday, and a big topic, probably the biggest topic of it, was how to develop the site. And, you know, I know the county has gotten in a number of site selection requests for chemical manufacturers and 100-foot-tall buildings and things like that that would be spatially okay for the site, but that the city and the county said, yeah, we're not going to put that in there, you know? We're not going to put a company that recycles lithium-ion batteries, because you need to have a blast radius of, I think, 100 feet from the building. Well, if you have to have things like that, we probably shouldn't be putting it by the school. And so, I think regardless of where, you know, how the site develops and where the buildings are located on the site, where the driveways, I think the things you're talking about are things that we need to be paying attention to and to accommodate, whether it's traffic, whether it's, you know, the look of the building, we don't want to have, you know, something there that everybody who's coming into town that way is going to be driving by and see it every, you know, every single day when they come in. So, whether it's aesthetics, whether it's traffic, whether it's, you know, the use that's actually done there, those are the things that we're going to have to make sure we stay on top of, which is part of the reason why we wanted to control the site.
Yeah.
There was a potential developer that, in another community where I do some legal work, we've had some issues with that developer, that developer was going to come into that site potentially, and that was part of the impetus for saying, we're getting a control with this before we have big issues.
Also, you took the words out of my mouth for the aesthetics of it. You know, it's where most people come, most visitors to our city are coming for sports and things like that. So, you know, I'm glad that that's on your mind, too, because it's very heavy on my mind for that portion of Norton Avenue, so.
Yeah. And I mean, maybe one day you guys will remind me I said this, but the reality is just with where interest rates are, with the cost to build anything, the likelihood is that whoever goes there is going to ask the city for some form of assistance to go there, which is going to put you guys in a position to be able to ask those questions and make sure you have those answers before that type of assistance would be given to whoever may go there. So, you know, I wish that wasn't the case. I wish people just moved in and built things without assistance anymore, but, you know, it is what it is with the economy and what's transpired over the last four years or so.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris? Go ahead.
Mr. Dotson, on the east side of Malco there?
Yes.
Where the house is budged up to that property, is there going to be any type of mounding or sort of like what Clinton Aluminum did?
Yeah. What I would tell you is naturally, that goes up. So, I think there's, I guess what I would say, kind of a natural mound in terms of how it goes down. I really can't imagine that kind of the woods that would sit between that parking lot and that boundary over there would, that you would take those out. I mean, you're going to need to have that buffer, I think, anyways, and just...
I'm just thinking, thinking of the neighbors there.
Yeah.
You know?
And again, that'll be another thing, if somebody comes in and tries to do something other than that, whether it be through the site planning process of the Planning Commission, whether it's through, again, that incentive process through you guys. The other thing you might note there, there's, and you can't see it up on the television screen, but there's a kind of a little strip that at some point, the foundation's going to work with those property owners, because there's a number of instances where the property owners are kind of on the foundation's property, and it was like that when they inherited it. And so, you kind of have two choices, tell them to get off or work with them and sell them a little strip of the land, and I think the foundation's looking at doing the second of those, too. So, the idea is to work with them.
That would be the backyards of the houses on Erie?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dotson. Thank you, Chair. Just real quick, just one question that popped up. Modifying the road on Norton Avenue is not going to mess with any obligations of the grant monies we got from like the bike lanes or the road, all that money that we've got, because that included bike lanes and...
Sure. I will defer to Mr. Tiedeki.
In fact, the bike lanes will be carried through this intersection and tied in better than they are now.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions from council members? Any from the gallery? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. If no other questions, can I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make that motion.
Got your second from Mr. Griffin. Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll open this up for miscellaneous, for finance. Any from the gallery? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you, and a second?
I'll second that.
Perfect. We are adjourned at 6:29.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. All right. Now, we're just going to go back up, and we'll do streets, sidewalk, and lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Let me find my paper. I have my stuff. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call this meeting of the Streets, Lighting, and Sidewalk Committee to order. Today is April 22, 2024. It is 6:30 currently. Everybody in the committee is present, including all other members of council, excluding Mr. Cheatham, and others noted on my sheet. This evening, we don't have any pending legislation and, you know, current legislation. However, I would like to have Mr. Tiedeki come up and give us maybe some little updates on some things that are going on with streets and sidewalks.
I don't really have anything prepared tonight, but one piece of information that did come in late last week is we had the pre-construction meeting that ODOT had with contractor Kenmore Construction Company for the Worcester West project, and I'll get more details as it gets closer, but it's pretty close now. Contractors are going to start putting signs up around the first week in May, and the closure and the detour will likely start about the second week in May. So, and as I get more and more information, I'll be able to get that to council, and we'll put it in social media, and we'll try and stay ahead of that and keep people in the loop on that as more information comes up. But that's probably the newest significant piece of information related to roads that you're going to see a lot more of here soon.
Thank you so much.
Does the city reach out to the businesses, or did you just see it on social media?
The contractor in the state of Ohio, ODOT, will be sending a letter to the residents, kind of talking about this as Kenmore Construction Company, here's emergency contacts, a better idea of the schedule, and when they're going to put the detours in. So, they'll reach out. ODOT's preparing a press release now to start this project. We're going to continue to work with them and their folks as this project moves forward. We're going to work through our social media and try and stay ahead of it also. And truly along the way, you know, get ahold of us if you have questions, constituents have questions as to what's going on, you know, forward them to me or the mayor's office, and we'll try and get on them to answer questions. I'm sure the day the signs go up and detour starts, there's going to be thousands of questions, no matter how much we push this out in social media or get the word out or letters we send. So, we know that, we're going to be prepared to do that. We've also worked with the consultant, ODOT, and Insight is knocking on doors of the businesses, and we're trying to go out and stay ahead of this. We've been for the last few weeks to contact them and also let them know, hey, we're on your side here, we know this is going to be tough, all construction is, so we're trying to talk to them, also give them the city information on numbers to call. You know, we promise we will help them in the way that we'll listen, we'll try and get answers, but we can never promise that we can do exactly what they ask, but, you know, we're here for them, that's what we're trying to tell them. You know, any construction's tough, but we'll be here to listen and try and accommodate and get you answers through ODOT or the contractor as that comes in. So, that's kind of the promise we make to them, is we promise we'll try and get you answers.
Thank you.
Mr. Tiedeki. Since you're up here. Taylor Road, you haven't even, I know they put a code down, they got a final code on that?
I don't know. Todd's kind of overseeing that and if he was here, but...
It's, it looks like it's done, other than they need to...
Top code could apply to it. There's still some yard restoration, but they can seal around the manholes and the drive aprons and the front joints of the roads, but top code is off.
And then, the next thing is the streets list. I know you said in your video, it had to go out the bit, has it went out the bit yet?
I believe so. I'm not sure. Todd will have that information.
I think tomorrow.
We are going to have Todd come up at the next Streets and Sidewalks meeting for his updates as well.
All right. I'm just trying to get answers for some constituents prior to that.
Right. Okay. Any other, anybody else?
Thank you, Chair. Better, I sent an email today, I didn't see if you were able to get back. I was getting complaints about the bottom of the hill on Haynes Street on 31st, right by the triangle. It's not something I would have sent in on a ticket, because it's not exactly a pothole, it's coming up pretty bad when I drove past it there. Is there any way we can get that addressed? I know the weather doesn't look like it cooperates a lot right now, but it doesn't, obviously the whole street doesn't even pave, but being at the bottom of the hill...
You're talking about right at the intersection, or close to the intersection?
Right at the, where Leach is, that's it, yeah.
Yeah. As long as the plants are making asphalt, we've got manpower, we can address it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all, Chair.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Remember that bridge really close to here, like takes Worcester over to Robinson? The big bridge by McDonald's?
Oh.
Robinson Bridge?
Thank you. I know you were working on getting the lights back on. Did they ever come back on? People were talking about it on social media this past week.
Uh, last I checked with them and drove over, yes, it was. Are they out again?
That's what social media is recording. If you want to check again, okay.
I'll drive back over. Yeah. All, one side was all out. It took me a couple of weeks to get to the bottom of it, but they were back on.
That's what I thought you said.
So, I'll check again.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll write that note for myself. Anybody else? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
We are adjourned at 6:36.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck.
Next up is Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental Health and Social Services meets tonight in council chambers. The time is 6:37 PM. All members of my committee are present, along with all other council members except for Karen Keaton and guests mentioned on my list. We have no requested legislation, no pending legislation. I did get a chance last week to go down and talk to Andy at Maad, mosquito abatement district, and spraying will begin usually towards the end of May. The overnight temperature has to be above 50 degrees, because that's when the mosquitoes will start to survive the weather. They will also, each resident... Also, all residents can have one free spray in their yard if they need it. If they are having a real issue with mosquitoes, the district will work with people. If you do not want your yard sprayed, you can call, and they will put your name on a list, it will stay on that list until you remove it, and they will stop spraying 100 yards before your house, and then not restart until 100 yards after your house. Also, got the report from the Summit County Public Health, General Health District, pretty much just going over, right, the big points are obviously mosquitoes coming into that season. They are hiring summer workers to go around and put larvicide into different bodies of water where they grow. It is a, the chemical is a, well, it's not really a chemical, it's a bacteria, but it's naturally occurring in the soil, and it's been used for over 30 years. They're also, in surrounding areas, they have enhanced rabies surveillance. Fortunately, we're not finding any in this area. It was more in Mahoning County. You know, they're just asking, you know, if people, do you think they found or see a rabbit, raccoon, or something, to please report it so they can get it taken care of, so that way it's not spreading to pets or other domestic animals and then human interaction. And pretty much other than that, just talking about typical, you know, like diseases, flu, COVID, you know, not a whole lot of any of those. And that's about it. Is there any discussion from my committee? Or the body? From the gallery? And with that, can I offer a motion to adjourn? Please? And we are adjourned at 6:40.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Next up is Planning, Annexation, and Codes with Mr. Hattick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Annexation, and Codes is Monday, April 22, 2024. It is 6:40 PM. We are in council chambers, the committee is present with the exception of Councilor Thompson, which includes Councilor Harris, President Greer, myself, the chair, all others are noted. We got, once again, we got nothing. Our director is not here. Plank Commission hasn't met since January. Mr. Best, do you have anything you want to say?
No.
Do I have any comments from the body? From the gallery? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:41.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hattick. That concludes our individual committee meetings this evening. With no objection, I'd like to take just a 30-second break here. I got to go check for public addressing council. And then we will begin our committee of the whole.
No. How are you? Proceedors?
When's your next get-together?
I think that's good until just a second ago. Then my good job is starting to go. I do, but I notice I don't have like more water building than you.
May 1st, it's 11 o'clock. I can't remember exactly where it's at. I got an email, I kind of just looked at it and asked, I think it's probably at Owl's, I would imagine. Good seeing you, too.
Nice to know when I have my door.
All right. We're going to go ahead and begin our committee of the whole meeting. Today's Monday, April 22, 2024. This is committee of the whole meetings for Barberton City Council. Call this meeting to order at 6:42 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Citizens addressing council? There are none. We'll hop into our committee reports, and we'll start with streets, sidewalk, and lighting with Mrs. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met in council chambers this evening. There weren't any new business, any new business, but Mr. Tiedeki gave us an update on the Worcester Road West project, as well as some questions were answered about Taylor Road. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Environmental Health and Social Services, Mrs. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental Health and Social Services met this evening in council chambers. We went over some information from the mosquito abatement district, as well as the Summit County General Health District, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Planning, Annexation, and Codes, Mr. Hattick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning, Annexation, and Codes has nothing to report. With that, I pass.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Planning, Annexation and Codes, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President, planning, annexation and codes has nothing to report, without that pass.
Thank you. City Properties, Parks and Recreation, uh, it was Mr. Cheatham and co-chair, Ms. Gerhardt.
City Parks, excuse me, City Properties, Parks and Recreation met on April fifteenth, we called an ordinance out of committee to rename the fields at the Barberton Community Foundation Sports Complex to the Bob Kurska One, Two, Three, Four Fields. And with that, I pass.
Thank you. Public Welfare and Safety, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Public Welfare and Safety met on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four here in council chambers, and we had nothing, and with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Rules, Marketing and Development, Ms. Gerhardt.
Much again, the Rules, Marketing and Develop Committee has nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Gerhardt.
You're welcome.
City Utilities, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Utilities met, uh, last week, April the fifteenth, and we have nothing to report since fifteen. Uh, we did have a special meeting tonight, uh, request legislation from Dennis Weaver, the total director, uh, to enter contract with Norman Eckinger for two million seven hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars, and that was passed on to finance, and Mr. Weaver gave a good rendition of it and explained everything to us. Uh, with that, I pass.
Sorry, Mr. Griffin, there was two pieces of legislation, wasn't there? Did you say both of them?
That was the finance.
Adjourn to conference.
A letter from Dennis Weaver, um, Dennis Weaver, you sort of request off the base the mayor to enter contract with Norman Eckinger for the WWTC sludge de-watering bill, rehab project, in the amount of two million seven hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars. This will be reimbursed through the Ohio Building Program. This is a second request for appropriation from the unappropriate item of the city grant fund to the capital budget of the city grant fund, emergency word. We will be voting on that next week. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, sorry for the confusion, I just wanted to make sure that it got called. And Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson is absent, co-chair, Mr. Heideck.
Thank you, Mr. President, Finance and Personnel is calling for the following. Authorization for the mayor to enter into a contract with Norman Eckinger for the wastewater treatment plant sludge de-watering building rehab project in amount of two million seven hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars, it will be reimbursed through the Ohio Building Program. This has been referred from utilities with emergency wording requested. It is for the appropriation from the unappropriate item of the city grant fund to this, capital budget of the city grant fund. Next is legislation to amend ordinance twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, open gov to reflect an increase in the total contract amount for three years, one hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars, emergency wording has been requested. And lastly, a resolution approving, um, memorandum of understanding between the City of Barberton, the Barberton Board of Education, and the Barberton Community Foundation, without that pass.
Thank you, Mr. Heideck, that concludes our individual committee reports this evening. Is there anything from the body that they'd like to share? Um, anything from department heads? All right, I do have just one thing, quick reminder that we do have council meeting next week on the twenty-ninth, it is the fifth Monday, however, we skipped the eighth for the eclipse, uh, so that's just a, a reminder. And Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, change for change is this Friday at Block Seven benefiting Barberton Youth Football and Cheer. Uh, last week I mentioned it was at the VFW, but that is the location for the May Change for Change. So this Friday, Block Seven, Barberton Football and Cheer. Uh, we've had two block, block drop-offs for residents this year, um, so being utilized pretty heavily, so that, that's a great sign. Um, some numbers from last week's Take Pride in Barberton Day, over a hundred and fifty participants, I'm still waiting to get the kind of tonnage back from, from Kimball, but the participants are up from the last few years, so that's another great sign. Um, as we heard, you know, construction continues on Worcester Road West, South Van Buren, Worcester Road North, and, uh, the extension at Holmes Avenue, Taylor Road, the waterline's complete, uh, the road is, uh, complete with the resurfacing, uh, just have some yard restoration and some, uh, we have to do a, a follow-up and check to make sure everything is done as, uh, per the contract, so, um, even though it's done, it doesn't mean that it's complete, so. Uh, last week, we kicked off the Lake Anna Community Center planning meeting, uh, with identified stakeholders, so that was a good turnout. Um, this Friday, it, we'll be planting a few trees at College Park, myself, Parks Director Don Patterson, and Councilman Griffin, uh, for National Arbor Day at two PM, so feel free to join us. And just lastly, the health board is canceled this Wednesday. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. With nothing else, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-nine PM.